Might as well get started. This is the Ocean Tours Plan Commission meeting via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded. It's Tuesday, May 11, 2021 at 2:00 PM. Roll call. Greg Cox.
Here.
Richard Hartman.
Here.
And your office.
It looked like she just dropped off. Her internet might have been a little unstable.
Okay. Eleanor?
Yeah.
Richard Wills?
Here.
Pat Brunson?
Here.
We'll give Tanya a minute to see if she comes back on. Seems as though she's a leader in the pack. Tanya, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Were we doing roll call?
Yeah. Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. So I have motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Is Pat first, who's second?
I'm second.
Okay. Who moved?
Okay, who moved?
Who moved? Did Pat do it, or did Eleanor?
Pat was first and Eleanor was second.
Okay.
But approved. Motion approved the minutes of April 27, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who moved?
Who seconded?
Rich.
Rich Hartman.
Okay, public comment. Do we have any?
I did not receive any written comment. We do have one citizen on the line, and it is Ann Reese. Ann, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, we can move to discussion and give it to Tanya to lead it through us. You're muted.
Okay, so if you guys, I guess I need to share the screen. So if you remember, last week, we were looking through the Linden ordinances around residential design. And we had worked through about half of their document. And we were working in a Word document and taking notes about comments as we went. So I guess I'll just pull that up and we'll resume from where we were last week. Does anybody have any, anything they want to say before we start working through that?
No.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so I need to share my screen. Let's see if I can do that. Okay, so I think Sarah needs to allow me to share my screen.
Tanya is the host now.
Okay, okay, thank you, guys. So here we go. All right, so again, just to refresh your memory, everything in this document came straight from the Linden ordinances. And we stopped at 19.22.040, which was detached garages and accessory structures during the last meeting. So as you scroll through this, you'll see, let me get my viewing. Oh, boy.
She's a crazy driver.
I am a crazy driver. I try really hard not to be, but all right. Great, so I want to be able to see the comments screen like I had it last time, and I can't quite recall how I got that up there.
It's showing right now.
It's showing, kind of. Yeah, last time it had a whole second bar for comments that was easier to read. But anyhow, so just to refresh your memory, as we look at this, anything in blue is something that we thought applied to Ocean Shores that we should keep. And any comments or concerns we had about the language or the item were just inserted into the document as comments. So carrying on, here we go, 19.22.040. Is that it? Yes. Okay, so here we are at 19.22.040, and we had left off at A dot two, which was architectural style of a detached garage shop or shed. So there we are. What do you guys think about that?
I think it is fine just the way it is.
So we had discussed last time a little bit, but we hadn't come to a firm stopping point whether we were going to ask people to make their accessory buildings match their home. And I think we were kind of a little bit of a mixed page about.
I think I was the one that was uncomfortable with pretending that residents want to build a, you know, workshop slash barn and expect them to cite it and have it match exactly to the house. I thought that that was extreme. We considered maybe just the street side be cited like the home, but I'm very concerned that this might be going too far. It is Ocean Shores. It's not the middle of a big, you know, metropolis, metropolis, and I don't know.
Any other comments?
I have one. For me, this is a good thing to do, but I'm with Rich. I don't think it's gonna fly here. I think we're gonna put something in there that's gonna get tossed out.
I just, I'd consider just striking that sentence for that number two completely.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said, Pat.
I just consider just striking that whole number two and take it out.
Okay, I do, too.
Here's, here's a question. I don't disagree with striking that, but we want to allow plastic sheds.
They're economical. They look good. It's tough to get a plastic shed that meets the 130 mile an hour sustained building code, 130 mile an hour wind sustained building code. But sheds can be tied down so they meet that requirement. So I'm not offended by a plastic shed, and they're proliferate throughout this peninsula. So I don't, I think plastic sheds are okay.
Richard, get me up to speed. A 10 by 10 plastic shed. Do they have to be secured like a normal structure is supposed to be secured?
No. They, they may not, but if you don't secure them, they become a safety issue. I talked to, to the zoning, not the zoning, to, to, what's her name at, at, at the department, the permit department?
Eddie?
Yes, and I was considering putting up a carport tent. And, and what she told me, and if I was to put up a carport tent, I would stake it down with straps, at least four straps over at the top of the structure to keep it from blowing away. And what she told me is that 10 by 20 foot tent did not need a permit. So I'm not sure how this applies to the plastic sheds. And, you know, and so Pat just said, strike this whole, this whole paragraph, and that may not be a bad idea. I don't know that we need to regulate plastic sheds. My feeling is if it doesn't violate your neighbor's rights, as my neighbor's light does my rights, what's wrong with it being there?
I have more of a problem with three or four of them being there than I do with a plastic shed.
Well, again, if, if, if the property has enough square footage to support three or four of them, because I forgot what the, what the number is. I think Pat may remember.
Yeah, no.
How many, how many square, pardon?
There's no limit.
So the limit we discussed last meeting, did that only apply to the main structure? Did that apply to the, to the total square footage of your lot? And I thought that, that you're only allowed to cover, my memory says 60% of your lot was structure.
Well, I know that I was concerned because of people with four or five sheds on my street. And I asked Alicia, and she said, there is no limit on how many sheds you can put up on a property.
There, there would be no limit up to that 60%. You're not wrong.
There's also probably no one actually going out checking that people are only keeping their 40% structure, right? I don't think anybody is actually enforcing that.
I agree.
So just a thought, even though some, some things are not enforced, does not mean that they should not be included in the ordinance. Because at some point.
Agreed.
City may want to start enforcing them, and the ordinance has to be in place.
I agree, too.
So I think the question is, are we going to ask people to have nicer sheds? Or are we going to try to dictate the shed needs to match the house? Or are we just gonna say, you can have any kind of shed you want? We don't care?
Well, there is already in the Newtons, in the nuisance ordinance, there's a line that talks about when it's in a state of disrepair. And that, I think that applies across the board. If things are in disrepair, then they're a nuisance, and then the city already has an ordinance to take care of them. And if they're not in disrepair, I may not like the color of the, of the paint, but so what? The color of the paint, again, is not, is not infringing on, on my right. And so, so I just need to become more tolerant of the color of the paint. And that's my position on most things. If it's, if it is not infringing on your neighbor's rights, then what's wrong with it?
So I think striking item two, and I would suggest striking item three as well.
If you kind of really go through this whole thing, 19.22.040, that whole thing, most of it doesn't even apply. And what does apply is already set by our setback rules within, that already exists. So I, you know, as you go farther down the page, they're talking about minimum heights or maximum heights. They're talking about setback rules, which the city, our city already has that in place in a different ordinance.
I say we strike it.
I'm okay with striking all of maybe the whole 19.22.040 for sure, A and B, and I think that is all of it. Oh, let's see, structure height.
It keeps going. There's C.
So, so I, but I think A and B could be struck.
Yeah, and probably C as well.
Okay, so just to back up a minute, so starting at the beginning of .040 here regarding detached garages, accessory structures. Did we want to recommend a limit on the number of structures, and if so, what?
I would like to.
I don't think that's terribly unreasonable to, to have a, a number. I mean, we don't want to say one, probably don't want to say two, and anything above that's great discussion.
I would be up for three.
So really quick, before we go crazy on striking everything, I think the problem I'm having with this is detached garages and accessory structures are really two different things.
Right, that's a good point.
And I think detached garages, because it's a substantial thing that you're building, should be treated different than an accessory structure. It seems to me that a detached garage really needs to look like the house. I don't think that's unreasonable.
How do you want to, how do you want to address the fact that I want to go build a, a building to hold my RV and my boat?
That's fine, as long as it's got the same siding, same roofing that your house does, and it's in keeping with kind of what your house looks like. I don't have any issues with it.
Everybody else has already got a metal building virtually everywhere on this peninsula.
But at some point, you have to say the standards have changed, and from this point forward, this will now apply.
Right, the growing pains if we want to clean up the community.
I mean, the whole, the whole purpose of the design standards was to try and minimize manufactured homes and minimize, for lack of a better, I guess I'm not gonna say this, probably offend people, but try to stop a bunch of ugly houses being built, just plain boxes. So if that's what our intent is, I think that maybe detached garages should have some standards put into them.
I do, too. And I think that, it's not that we want to stop manufactured homes because they're legal. We want to upgrade them so that they fit in more with the neighborhood.
Right.
Right.
040 and just do detached garages.
I want you to be.
And then we can address accessory structures later if we want to limit the number they put on. Or you could, or you could go ahead and leave them both in there, but make sure like the general requirements is specific to detached garages, not accessory structures.
Well, they're already separated as it is, and so do we just want to leave paragraph A alone?
I think to define what we mean by accessory structures. We have that comment from before, from the last meeting, that we should define accessory structures.
What if we do anything over 100 square feet? Because anything over 100 square feet requires a permit.
Anything over 100 square feet requires a permit, so then we're getting, anything under that, then it would just be kind of a free for all, anything goes?
Well, it already is.
Right.
But I think the consensus was is that we don't want to be that restrictive on plastic sheds, that type of thing. So if that's the case, then anything that's requires a permit, which is over 100 square feet, would kick in. Then we would apply design standards to it.
So just, just food for thought as we look at paragraph three. And the way that I interpret about the roofing material is that it just now made metal carports illegal. Is, is that, and I'm just throwing that into this discussion mix.
That's correct.
And, and I, I, I'm not happy with that. I think there's nothing wrong with metal carports as long as they are up to code.
But if we're going to start trying to dictate the visual, I'm going to say my opinion is a metal outbuilding is better looking than almost every metal carport I've ever seen. My brother has one as well. They're not very attractive, so if we're gonna make people side a metal building to match their house, how the heck do we allow a carport? I think we're overstepping a little bit personally.
And, and I agree with you. I think we're overstepping. I used to live in Seattle, and, and one of the primary reasons I don't live in Seattle outside of the traffic is, is I like the freedom and the, the, I like the freedom of living in the beach community. And, and so, so I, I think that it's great to, to, to establish standards, but I don't think the standards should be too restrictive, and metal carports are ubiquitous all across the country. And, and I think they're just fine here in Ocean Shores.
I don't necessarily agree with you, but was that, was that what we want the community to look like, to look like your metal carport? I don't know.
Well, quite frankly, I think the metal carports look a lot better than the tent type carports. Not that I like either, but.
Can I add something? I've actually been looking into the matter and have looked at a number of metal and stick-built detached garages. And there is a, there is a new, I think, nationwide building trend towards free span metal buildings that are remarkably, can be made remarkably attractive. And they're, given the price of wood today, they are becoming more and more affordable. And at least the two that I've recently looked at, architecturally, I didn't think that they were displeasing at all. So I, I think prohibiting the new metal structures may be a, a bridge too far for me personally. I, I, I do think that the design and the affordability, the utility of them is becoming more popular nationwide in many communities because more and more people have RVs, boats, and other things that your standard garage is not gonna handle. And, you know, given the price, the terribly high price of stick-built structures right now, like I said, I think these metal buildings are becoming more and more popular, and I'd hate to see us get in the way of that, that trend.
Okay, but how do you, how do you regulate? I'm not against, no, necessarily against metal building, but some of those carports are not very attractive. So how do you put in, in the code or put in this, they have to be, look like that? I don't know how to do that.
Well, why can't we just use the same standards that we've already kind of agreed to? That architecturally, aesthetically, they still have to be, quote, pleasing or compatible or, you know, fit into the aesthetic of the neighborhood.
I agree with you, Dan. I have no idea how you can regulate metal carports to look good. That, that none of them are gonna match anything. I, I don't know what we do if we're trying to regulate. I don't know how you regulate. It's, there's too many different brands and we might as well start regulating the color of tarp's that people put over their roofs. No more blue.
Anybody else? Where do we go from here?
So I think what I'm hearing is, and I put this in the comment here, comment number 13. So we have a couple of different issues that we're talking about. Number one is detached garages. Number two is accessory structures. And then when you get into accessory structures, we need to break down what we're talking about within that. And carports sound like they're a different category than other accessory structures like a shed. So I think the question is, do we want to try and regulate carports? Yes or no?
So, so to address the difference in accessory structures, in my mind, anything that is not a residence or a garage, whether it's attached or detached, everything else, to include greenhouses and gazebos and everything else, is an accessory structure. So if we defined accessory structure, any, any building that is not a garage or, or a residence.
So, so any structure that is not a garage or a residence, would this be something that has walls or only a roof?
Well, a shed would have a wall, so.
But Richard maybe made a good point about gazebo. I'd never thought of that.
Right, or a covered patio or?
Or a greenhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Of these accessory structures, are we speaking of the ones that are non-permitted, the, the under, under square feet?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, go ahead.
And, and I think that, that, that at least to some degree addresses Eleanor's issue, not, not entirely. So, so in my mind, if we were to define accessory structure, any structure that is not a residence or a garage, whether attached or detached, is defined as an accessory structure. And then, then when, when we, when we beautify the requirements for accessory structures, it, it separates that idea of accessory, it separates accessory structures from garages.
Is it reasonable for us to support Eleanor's suggestion that there not be more than three unpermitted structures on a single lot?
I think so.
Me, too.
That would include anything that's unpermitted, gazebos, wood sheds, art studios, office, tool room, whatever it is, if it's not a permitted structure.
I think wood sheds taken it too far. I think the three was kind of, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud. I mean, I feel like if you have a woodshed and you want to have a gazebo and a greenhouse and a couple of little sheds for whatever, if you can fit it on your lot, it seems, you know what I'm saying? Like, it feels like you can't lump them all in that same group of three.
That's why I tried to just lump them into the not permitted.
Yeah, I, I think.
The three's not your favorite number. Do we even want to, do we want to come up with what that number is of unpermitted structures and move forward, at least decide on that?
Before we move forward on a number of, 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 of number of structures, I think that, Tanya, if you made a note that we verify how many square feet of your property can be covered in a structure. how many square feet of your property can be covered in a structure. And, and so whether that applies to just your house and, and your garage, or does your gazebo and shed, is that included? And, and if the number, for example, were 60% of your lot could be covered by structure and, and you choose to put up 10 structures to get to your 60%, I don't have a problem with that frankly.
I would if they're unpermitted.
I didn't hear what you said, Richard.
I would if they were unpermitted. I don't, I don't think you should have 12, 10 by 10s.
Why?
Well, then why are we trying to regulate any of the building standards?
Well, I, 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 my point in asking why is, is sometimes when I understand other people's reasoning, then it makes more sense and you have, may have thought of some aspect that I haven't thought of. But I go back to, to the basic premise of, of my rights as a citizen and, and my definition of rights is that they don't impinge on my neighbors' rights.
So I, I separate them between permitted and non-permitted. If you had 60% of your property used with permitted, multiple permitted buildings, I could agree with you. But if you're trying to have 60% of your property covered with non-permitted, under 100 square foot buildings, I, I'm not comfortable with that as a person.
I agree. And also, if, if you had to live opposite somebody that has four structures lined up on the driveway and a greenhouse on their front porch, that's the size of a garden shed. I, I just don't think that encourages a nice looking neighborhood.
But if you're, Richard, if you're trying to have your lot with 60% coverage with permitted buildings and your idea of a cool compound is five structures all permitted, I'm already assuming that because there are five permitted structures there of substance and they're of some basic quality rather than seven plastic 10 by 10 Kmart sheds.
So as, as I hear what you're saying, Rich, I, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with you. I can think of an architectural style that is a series of buildings connected by breezeways. And, and I think that could potentially be pretty attractive, but and six plastic sheds connected by a breezeway, maybe not so much. So I agree with you.
So if we did three structures, unpermitted structures, that would not limit how many structures they could build that were permitted as long as it did not take up more than 60% of the lot. I, I think that's a livable compromise.
I agree.
I, I agree also with the caveat. I think that we and verify how much of the lot can be covered by structure. And, and like I said, Tony, if you just make a note, one of us can, can, can make that verification.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the chapter 17 from Ocean Shores to try and find that and I don't know quite where that would be. Anyway, I will, I will continue to try and figure that out, but back.
Pat, do you have any, Pat, do you have any counterpoint to what we just kinda discussed?
You know, I, I, I don't, I, you know, on one hand, you're, we're, we're trying to not be too restrictive. On the other hand, we're trying to make Ocean Shores look better. So it's kind of a tight rope that we're, that we're walking. I don't believe that anybody should have, you know, 10 tough sheds on their, on their property. But at the same time, to everybody's point, you know, we've got greenhouses, we've got all kinds of stuff. But I still think that we should try and put some sort of restriction on what the garages look like. I mean, I don't know if you've been down Plain Brownless lately, but somebody just built a great big pole barn in front of their house. And that's what we're gonna get to look at for the next 50 years. And how do we, how do we come up with some sort of language that doesn't allow that to happen?
Is it reasonable to address a pole barn type application with the street side needs to be sited like the home rather than all four?
I mean, guys, right now, we can address anything we want. We can make it as restrictive or as unrestricted as we want. We just gotta decide what is it that we want Ocean Shores to look like? And this isn't about what it looks like today. It's what is it gonna look like in the future? And that's the hard part of what we're trying to accomplish right now because we keep going back to what it looks like today.
Well, Linden addressed that at least in part by saying that you can't have a, an accessory structure, garage or otherwise, in front of your house or that, that whose frontage is farther forward than the front of your house. I hope I made that make sense.
Right. I don't think that works here though.
It, it, it doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't. Just because there's such a dichotomy in the style of lots here. There's long skinny lots, there's wide lots. So you can't just say one size fits all because it doesn't.
But you also can't say, put it, you can't have them on the front of the street side of the lot because that could then be interpreted to, it's okay to have them on the lakeside.
True. So, you know, it doesn't give me a lot of heartburn with the way the thing is written. To, to, I mean, it's pretty restrictive and, and we all agree that we don't want it that restrictive, but I do believe that we need to keep that restriction on detached garages, carports, metal structures. I don't know however you wanna handle them. I personally don't like, but, but that's just my opinion.
And something Rich said about just having the street side decided like the house. Well, you gotta think about the neighbors on each side. I, I think, I think siding on all sides should be comparable to the house.
So where do we go from here?
Well, I, I'm not against, I'm, I'm personally not against what you're suggesting. Match the outbuilding. I just am trying to think ahead because I want us to have everything that we push through this committee approved. And I'm scared to death that the city council would never agree to that. And so that's what makes me second guess it. I mean, you're not wrong. It'd be great to have the outbuildings match the house. I just worry about us getting that approved.
The flip side of that, Rich, is that they have the right to change. Just like we talked about, making some minor changes there. Your homeless shelter thing, they just, they took out one of the streets we had on where they could go. So if they, if they're, like I said last week, I think they're looking at things differently. And so they don't like it, they have the right to change it. But I think we need to do the best job we can with what this group feels we would like with cars to look like.
Well, then I, I'd support Pat's suggestion, but I would also like us to have something in, like Eleanor suggested, where we don't have more than three outbuildings that are unpermitted.
I agree with that.
But why don't we, why don't we do this? So let's, instead of trying to make Linden's, this piece of Linden's thing work for us, let's break it down and do something on detached garages and then do a whole nother thing on accessory structures. And if you want, do a whole nother thing on metal carports. So, but I think, I, I think that the metal carports that they're, I think their term of carports isn't what we're thinking of carports. Their term of carports, well, maybe it is. I don't know.
We actually have, looking at chapter 17 here from Ocean Shores, we actually have a definition for carports and accessory structures already in our books.
Read it to us.
Um, let me go back and find it here. Okay, so um, are you guys able to see? Let me change my screen share. Now I need to figure out how to change my screen share. Okay, I'm just gonna read it. 17.04.010, accessory structure means a subordinate structure being secondary to or incidental to the principal use or structure. So that could be a lot of things.
Well, that works for me.
Building coverage is another thing. I still haven't found where they reference the 40%. Okay, here's carport, 17.04.110, carport. Carport means a covered space for the housing primarily of motor vehicles and enclosed on not more than two sides by walls, screens, cabinets, or other types of enclosures. So those are the definitions. I don't know what the regulations actually are.
Well, as, as to address what Pat was talking about, and I don't know how to word this correctly, but if it is a stick-built garage or carport, then maybe that should match the style of the house, which does not then exclude a metal carport. But if you, if you put up a stick-built carport or garage, then an effort should be made to match the architecture of the primary residence. And I think we can define that and I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure I understood what you said, Rich. So you're saying that if somebody wanted to put up a metal carport, they're fine to do that, but if they decide they wanna build a stick-built structure, then it has to match their house.
It doesn't have to be an exact match, but yes, it should resemble the architecture of the house.
So same siding, same roofing, same paint color?
Yes.
And that's any, any outbuilding of any sort or just the detached garages?
In, any permitted stick-built structure.
So what about like tough sheds that are already built, they're stick-built, but they're not built on site?
Those are unpermitted possibly. So like unpermitted wouldn't qualify.
If, if they're under 100 square feet, they would be unpermitted, but most of them are bigger than that.
So there's a difference then between stick-built and prefabricated. And so maybe prefabricated falls into the classification with metal carports. We could say metal carports are prefabricated carports or structures.
So we would say if you wanna build anything on your lot, then it has to match your house, but anything prefabricated is okay?
I don't know about that.
I know, just trying to figure out where, how to.
I don't think about it. The other, the other thing if, if, if a manufactured home, then they have to split. So why wouldn't a shed over 100 square feet have to split?
I think you do.
Okay, so we're, we're okay in saying what you said about permitted, that it has to match similar to the house. And a lot of the prefabricated ones, similar, similar to the most, a lot of houses. So you just have to be more careful with what you're saying.
So Dan, what about me? I wanna build a permitted 10 by 15 shed in my backyard and I want it to look like a red barn and my house is gray. Cause I like the way a red barn looks. I think it's cool. What are you gonna tell me?
Are you gonna have the same pitch as your house? Same kind of roof or are you gonna have a barn?
I want it to look like a barn. I want it to be a really cool shed, real cool outbuilding.
I have a difficult time with that one, but you know, I'm only one person.
Right. See, that's what I'm, I'm trying to just move forward is that there's, there's so many neat things people could do in their yards with a permitted building, you know, that's larger than 10 by 10, that you don't want to actually have match your house. You want it to be unique. But the way we're writing this, it's gotta match the house for the most part.
Um, you know, I can see exactly why you would think a red barn would look good. And you're obviously gonna use taste when you make the purchase. But you can't assume everybody else is gonna make a really neat structure that looks great in their yard.
Right. And of course I'm making this up, Eleanor. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I, and would, I'm just kinda going along with it. That what one person thinks is neat and may actually be could be completely different in my eyes.
Well, I agree because I think having rubber tires with dirt in the middle of them to use as tomato planters is really cool.
That's a landscape issue.
And I've seen that.
Absolutely. I just want us to be careful with these outbuildings because I don't know, they're just, we, I, I'm trying to think like I'm a city employee that has to enforce this. And how do I say to one family, oh yeah, that's beautiful. Go ahead and paint it uniquely like that. And then the other family, because of what Eleanor just said, yeah, no, you've gotta match your structure.
So is there a middle ground?
Well, maybe we, maybe like Pat had said earlier, Rich. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Maybe we're stepping outside the scope of our, our, our job here. One of you had pointed out that, you know, we started out just trying to make manufactured homes more aesthetically compatible with neighborhoods. And, you know, I think you guys have done a really good job with that. And now we're, we've gravitated into all these other structures. And there may be good reason, as, as some of you have articulated, that some people get out of, out of control over some of this stuff. But it is beyond the scope of what we started to do. And we're struggling with it. I mean, we're once again down to, I hate to bring it up, a design review committee who makes judgments about the, all of these kinds of things that we're struggling with. And yet, we can't even get, give a design review committee any kind of standards to utilize in making those judgments. So you know, I guess I'm sorted to the point where maybe we should back off of this and just say that permitted structures generally need to be aesthetically complementary to the neighborhood and to the residents without getting any more specific. And limit accessory buildings without permit to three and call it good.
But you're leaving so much open to what I may perceive as being acceptable, you may not. And I just think like we have to be a little clearer than that.
Well, I think the only thing that's vague about what I just said is the accessory buildings.
Right.
And so, and I offered, you know, your recommendation that we simply limit it to three. And so, and I offered, you know, your recommendation that we simply limit it to three to permit people's, you know, imagination, you know, like Rich's idea of cool-looking red, red and white barns. Um, you know, I don't want to stifle people's imagination. But just like you, I would, I would like it to be aesthetically pleasing. And, you know, if you've got neighbors that have got ten of them, um, that doesn't sound reasonable to me. But keep in mind, anything that we pass is not going to be retroactive. We're not going to be able to fix existing situations with this order.
Stop it from expanding.
Yes, we can, but that's why I offered a limit on three. Let's just add the same language then. Accessory buildings need to be, um, uh, complement the, uh, neighborhood and principal residence. And leave it at that, without getting prescriptive about it.
Greg, I like what you just said, because that's, that's, although it's not a precise, uh, definition or standard, uh, it's, 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 it's kind of like the, the sesame seeds. One of these things is not like the others. And that's pretty easy for most of us to identify, but then where does, uh, uh, plastic sheds larger than a hundred square feet in metal carports fall into your definition?
Same standard. They need to be, um, uh, aesthetically complimentary to the neighborhood and the, the principal residence. It's, it, you know, without getting, again, overly prescriptive about it.
And. I, I texted Nettie while we were talking about this, it's kind of interesting. On vacant lands, only an eight by ten is allowed. And she reviews that at the time of application. You do have to have an application. And then the Home Depot type sheds regardless of size is okay on a lot with a house. That is how it stands today.
I think that's good. I, I, I think that, that falls into the problem that we're discussing right now.
Yeah, I could, I could live with that.
Pat, you just said that on a vacant lot, an eight by ten is allowed, and it must be reviewed, so it has to be permitted?
It does, on a vacant lot.
Okay, and then on a non-vacant lot, so when there's a house, then anything, any size shed can be done without a permit?
I asked her, I, I said any size, and she hasn't responded to that, but
Okay.
The question I posed to her, I said, what does the building department do when someone wants to put a shed that they bought at Home Depot that's larger than ten by ten?
Okay.
And that's when she says it's okay on a lot with a house.
Okay. Okay.
We add some kind of language about tarts as roofs?
Can we please? Uh.
Well, so the, the first thought that comes to mind when you do that is, is, uh, the storm blew my roof off. Uh, and, and if there's language in there about what kind of tart, uh, then I just have to let it rain on me until I can go and get this specific tart? I'm not sure I like that.
Well, obviously temporary is fine. I think there needs to be a time limit. And I think that's not part of our current work, but.
What, uh, how do you address the, the, uh, fixed income who just doesn't have the money right now to put a new roof on?
Probably the same way we're, uh, handling all of the other code violations. We don't do anything about it.
Yeah, let's not get into extenuating circumstances and emergencies. I, I think, I mean, for heaven's sakes, we're not going to regulate that, I don't think.
Um. And I, and I think that's my point.
Well, a point well taken, then. Let's just not go there. Let's, let's back up here. Um, we seem to have some agreement based on what I had proposed. That we're simply asking for these detached garages and accessory structures to be complimentary to the neighborhood and the principal residence. We're limiting the number of accessory structures to, to three without permit, meaning if somebody wants to put up four, they need to get a permit for the fourth one. Um, and, but it's still going to be subject to the same standard. It's got to be complimentary to the neighborhood and to the principal residence.
So Tanya, were you able to capture all of that?
I'm not sure. Let me go back here. So, uh, we're limiting we're limiting accessory structures to three.
Unpermitted, I thought we.
Right, okay, unpermitted, and then after that, they're needing to get a permit. Um. So we're gonna say if you want to put a fourth shed up, you need a permit for number four and above?
Well.
I don't think we should let more.
I don't think you can arbitrarily do that. I think one, one per, I mean, it permits are required based on certain standards.
Um, right.
And so you can't say you could, because basically what we're telling them is go ahead and build three of whatever you want, and then the fourth one, you gotta get a permit.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we take that to permission then.
I did, I did send another text to Nettie asking if there's a, a limit to the amount of sheds a person can put on a lot with a house. So be interesting to see if that already exists.
Right.
Pat, can you repeat what you said earlier? Did you say on a vacant lot, how many sheds I might be able to have right now?
You can only have one.
And I don't have one unpermitted shed?
Yeah, well, on a vacant lot, you have to permit.
Well, in a vacant lot, it's next door to my house, and I just put a, I put an eight by ten garden shed there. Is that allowed?
It's allowed, but you have to tell the building department you're doing it.
I have to tell them, and I'm, and I'm only allowed one?
Correct. The, the reason, the reason that, okay, so I just got a text back. No limit on sheds with house, so there isn't a physical limitation on how many, as it sits today. Sheds up to two hundred square feet without a permit with house, any size variation. So you can do whatever you want up to. If you have a house, and on that lot, you can build as many sheds as you want that don't exceed two hundred square feet. That's the way it is today.
Wow. But on my vacant lot?
It's eight by ten, and it is, um, o- only one is allowed. And the reason they are doing that, oh, and by the way, it can only have one door, one window. Um, and the reason they're, and no power, and the reason they're doing that is because they don't want people using it to camp yet.
And that has happened.
So Eleanor, is the, the lot that you're referring to a lot with a home that has all these sheds, or is it a vacant lot with a bunch of sheds?
It's a lot with a home.
So two hundred square feet is the biggest shed I can put without a permit. Is that correct, Pat?
That is correct.
It has to be built to the same standards? I mean, does that be a hundred and thirty mile an hour winds, or can it just be a shed out there?
Just not.
Okay. Sounds like I've got a new office coming.
Yeah, ADU.
But I go back and ask Tanya if you got, if you were able to capture the rest of Greg's comment, uh, about, uh, Greg, I forgot how you worded that. But the way you ordered it, I thought was pretty good. Uh, so, so can you, if everybody likes Greg's wording, can we capture that so that, uh, uh, we can move on to the next item?
I can learn the wording.
I don't mind the wording, but after that, something rich, yeah. Um, now we've given the permit for somebody, uh, the task to say what's aesthetically good for the neighborhood and house. So you put that almost back on the city. Because I may think something looks great for the neighborhood, and my neighbor means that I don't like that, so. It's, it's really loose, and I don't mind that, but you just got to understand the ramifications of doing so.
Well, I believe that was what I said at the time, that we'll, we'll even it up to interpretation.
Well, why don't we get more, just a bit more specific then, and use the language that's currently highlighted as item number A two. It says architectural style of detached garage, shop, or shed must match the style of the primary structure.
Correct. I'm with me.
Good with me.
And then I'd strike out, however, architecturally themed structures such as roof liners or traditional barns may be permitted.
Well, it's, that's subject to, subject to some interpretation, but I, I'm, I think that's okay.
Okay.
And it basically, you know.
Well, if you read the rest of it, it also addresses your greenhouses and your open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles. Doesn't prohibit it.
Right, I'm okay with leaving that and, you know, recommending that we adopt that. And, and again, limit the number of accessory structures to three without permit. Uh.
I think we ought to take out the without permit and just limit it to three.
Well, can't anybody seek a, uh, uh, a variance? Yeah, I mean, isn't that standard procedure that if somebody really wanted four, they could go to the city council and petition the city council for a variance?
Yes, they can.
All right, so Eleanor, fine, let's drop the, um, drop that stipulation and just say it's limited to three. And if somebody has a burning desire to put up the red barn, they can petition the city council.
Okay.
Rich, you have any heartburn with that?
Not at all.
Okay.
I'm still stuck on what we're calling an accessory structure. Um, it, I don't think.
They're calling everything.
Yeah, I don't think gazebos or a covered patio or a wood shed should be counted as one of your three.
I agree.
So when we talk about accessory structures and we're talking about three, it sounds like we're really trying to talk about sheds specifically, right?
Well, sheds and, and greenhouses, I mean, when somebody has three or four sheds in a greenhouse sitting on the front porch, I think that's too much.
Well, except for number two exempts greenhouses and open-sided structures.
But isn't, I mean, surely they cannot put them on a front porch.
Hmm, actually you can.
Yeah, I have seen homes here that are aesthetically pleasing that have really nice greenhouses built into their front porch.
Well, it depends on really nice, though.
Well, it depends on where the sun's coming from. They usually face south, and that's why people do that. You know, again, we've got this language that says the architectural style shall match the style of the primary res- residence, match or complement the primary residence. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to make ugliness illegal.
Yes, I'm moving.
That's the whole point of this thing, is to try and do that.
Yeah, I know, I know, and, but, you know, um, I guess, rather than trying to anticipate every silly thing that human beings can come up with, um, I'd rather stick to, you know, our vision. Let's just focus on what our vision is. Our vision is that it should be architecturally pleasing. It should be consistent with the primary residence or complement the primary residence, and it should be, uh, aesthetically pleasing or complimentary to the whole neighborhood.
I like two hours with myself.
Couldn't hear that.
I like two hours with.
You like how it is? Item two is find how it is, is what Dan said. Um. I don't see why we would say something agriculturally themed is okay. We're not Linden, we're not a farming community, so I feel like that particular sentence is a little bit odd.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So let me see, so we could, are you guys comfortable with striking that second sentence out and then, so item two? Let me highlight this, because it sounds like we want to keep it.
Yeah, I'd say take that out.
Yeah.
Boy. Okay, so the third sentence says, also, this standard is not applicable to greenhouses or open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles, um.
That would be the metal, that'd be the metal carport things like we talked about earlier.
Right, can we also add in there wood sheds? It, it's not applicable to wood sheds or, um, garbage coverings, you know, people build little like shelters for their garbage. You know, I mean, there's just a lot of random little things that I would, I would not want that to count as one of our three.
I agree with you on the wood. Covering wood.
Okay, so I'm trying to organize these notes a little bit, so they make more sense when we come back to this. Okay. Um, all right. Okay, so specifically, we want to look at number two and add a comment. Here we go. Okay. Um, so we're at number two, we're gonna remove the, the barn language. Architectural style must match the primary structure. And then we say, also, this standard is not applicable to greenhouses or open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles or wood sheds or garbage screens. I know that's not a very nice way to say that. I don't have a good way to say that. Garbage screening, um, utility screening structures? This doesn't make sense. Are you guys there?
Yes, we're all.
Okay.
What we're talking about is, uh, not allowing to have the electrical hookups facing, you know, the street side, the TV side of the house.
Right.
If they were, they need to be covered, because.
Right. So what, what do we call that? Um, utility screens is not quite right.
Are we talking about the big green boxes?
No.
Like your, your electrical hookup for your house? Most houses have them on the side where they're not visual. I've noticed a lot of manufactured homes have their electrical utilities facing the street.
I got it.
Where this, they need to be screened in some fashion by plantings, well, probably by plantings.
That and covering propane tanks and. That and covering propane tanks and garbage.
Okay, how does this sound? Okay, so um adding on to the end of that. Or woodsheds or structures intended to screen utility connections or garbage cans. How does that sound?
Sounds okay to me. I don't know how you could put it.
Okay, good enough for now then. Um, and then within this same. Item two, are we going to say that um we're limiting to three?
Yes.
Okay. All right, limit of three per residential lot. For developed residential.
I would, I would put it in in sentence four.
Okay, so say that again.
Because four doesn't apply to us. So just you just put accessory structures limit, limited to four or three, sorry.
So in item four, you would just take out what's in there and then put limit to three?
Yeah, because none of that applies to us.
Okay, so let me just cross that out, add a comment. So it's limit of three per developed residential lot, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so I, this is a little bit off topic, but if you have a camping lot, you're apparently not allowed to put up like a gazebo. I don't really understand why not. If somebody wants to build a beautiful gazebo in their camping lot, that beautifies ocean shores, doesn't it?
You're allowed to have one. Under a hundred and twenty square foot. Building on your lot as long as the planning commission or the permitting office knows about it. Is that right, Pat?
You're allowed to have an eighty.
It's actually eighty square feet. And um yeah, and I, when I did it on my camping lot, I had, I had to give them a drawing and get a permit. But it's because it was a vacant lot.
So did you have a gazebo and an eighty foot shed or just a gazebo?
They can't have a gazebo, they're not allowed to by our code is what I was told.
Well, couldn't they have an eight by ten gazebo?
And that. And no shed. I guess, I mean, if somebody, um, I don't think so, because our, our code actually spells out what that accessory shed is allowed to look like. And I don't think a gazebo would fit that requirement.
How many people want to build a gazebo on the lot that we're spending this much time on it?
Well, I I realize I'm getting off topic and I apologize, it's just something that I, while we're talking about these things. Um, I think it's worth thinking about. Because I I just don't understand how that doesn't benefit our town if somebody wants to put up a nice gazebo.
Well, if it was, I've got a, I've got a camping lot and if I want to put up. A gazebo because I want a place to sit out of the rain when I'm camping, I gotta tell you, an eight by ten isn't gonna cut it. So that means I'm gonna go to the permit office and get a permit and build a proper one that's the right size. So. I can, I can build what I want.
Well, I don't know, I just texted Eddie and asked her, so I'll let you know.
Okay, all right, so we can talk about that more, we're not, we're not there yet. Um. Thanks for, thanks for entertaining that. Um. Okay, so what about number three, all accessory structures including carports must utilize roofing materials compatible with the primary structure?
That's a hard one if we're gonna allow carports.
Yeah, and also what does compatible mean? We need to define that better if we're gonna keep that.
Well, if you've got a comp roof, you want a comp roof on your shed.
Right, so I would say compatible is not the right word there, I don't think.
If somebody wants to put a metal roof on the carport, I I guess I don't say anything wrong with that.
But but let's define, I think we're confusing carports. And open sided structures intended to only cover recreational vehicles. They're two different things, not the same.
Oh, yes, okay, Ocean Shores definition of carport. I have to find it again, um, but it basically said something um with. Open sides, right? So it was allowed to have up to two sides enclosed. And still be considered a carport.
Okay. And Nettie just got that back to me, no shed, uh, no on gazebos, sheds only.
Yeah. So Ocean Shores defines carport as a covered space for the housing of motor vehicles enclosed on not more than two sides by walls, screens, cabinets, or other type of enclosures.
Uh, you know, for me, I I would say I would be great with just taking three out.
Could you repeat that?
I agree with you, Pat, because the the ordinance on carports already is already clear enough. Uh, and I think that three is superfluous to what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I I just think it needs to go away.
Okay. Are we all comfortable with that?
Yes.
Awesome, okay, moving on. Um. Okay, so setbacks, we're gonna ignore this whole section because we already have code about setbacks, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and then height, we can also ignore that, is that correct?
So what about that that garage that Pat talked about earlier, uh, that's that's sixteen stories tall or whatever it was?
I did.
Well, you said two stories, I I exaggerate to make a point. So so. Do we need to address accessory structure height? Uh, so I've got a one story house. Uh, and then I build a a garage with a a a mother-in-law home on the second floor. Uh, that sits out in front of the house. Um. Is is that okay? I'm thinking specifically about that, that uh. Uh. At the south end of Point Brown, uh, on the, on the east side of the street. Uh, in the last two or three months, they have built a monstrous two-story structure and I think the ground floor is 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 garage, the top floor is residence. Um, uh, and it looks way, way, way out of place.
Where is that?
Isn't that, isn't that, that blue house on the end of Point Brown?
The new, yeah, the new one, yeah.
No, I'm thinking about the one that 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 has the 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 runabout sitting on the ground in front of it that has all in a sign stickers. I think it used to be, they used to make signs in that.
The old Bojos?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it, I think it's a three-story or four-story house, isn't it? I mean, it is, but it is butt ugly, but it's, it's, I don't, I don't remember the 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 ground floor being all garage.
Well, I I I'm just guessing, uh, I haven't, I haven't got out of the car and gone and and looked, it looked to me like that was a garage door, but I didn't frankly pay that much attention. Um, uh, and do we have a. Height limitation on residences in the city? I don't know the answer to that.
We do, yes.
Are you familiar with them, Pat? Like.
It's, it's thirty-eight feet.
Oh. Would that be a three-story building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that building that you're talking about is a primary residence. And I don't, and it checks off all the boxes. Um, I, I guess I have less of a problem with that and I don't think we should get into carriage houses as long as. If they're gonna, somebody's gonna build a a detached garage with a carriage house above it. And it's in keeping with the look of the house, the primary house, I think it's fine.
Then then what I'm hearing, and I don't disagree, what I'm hearing is that we strike the entire paragraph C and all of its subparagaphs.
Yeah, can you scroll back, um, Tanya?
Sure.
Yeah, all of it, it doesn't really apply to us.
Okay, so we can go ahead and just ignore that.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to D, um, we have code around all of this too, so I don't know if we need to get into this, but um. Let me know if you guys see anything.
Number one, there's code for that, or it exists.
Okay.
There's code for number two. Uh, number three doesn't apply.
Right.
We don't have a Pippin Creek senior overlay.
Right.
Um. Detached carports, I think we just strike all of that.
Okay, so moving on to uh twenty-two point oh five oh. Landscaping, lighting, fencing, screening, okay. Let me scroll down a little bit here. All right. Okay, um, so again, the yellow highlighting was just my own note, so ignore that. Um, so starting with the objective. Enhance the aesthetics of communities, um, safety, blah, blah, blah. Um, so landscaping refers, so item A just references back to some of their other code fences, um, item A two. A fences shall not be built closer than three feet to the property on each side of the sidewalk for front yards and for street side yards. I don't. I don't know if we need to care about any of that. No.
I don't think so.
Okay, so moving on, screening, item three, screening, um, I think this is kind of important. In residential zones, trash and recycling containers shall be stored inside or rear yards or within enclosed garages. Now, I don't comply with that right now. But what would you, what do you think about that? Not necessarily forcing people to put them in the rear yards, but maybe that we ask that they be screened? Or is that just going too far?
That's a tough one.
My, my garage, uh, my Lemay's garage containers are right outside my garage door, my garage is on the street side of the house. My garage is screened from the street, I've got a great big, uh, I've got a circular driveway with a monstrous tree and and a bunch of bushes and shrubs. So effectively, my garbage cans are screened, uh, except. And look down the driveway and see the garage door. Uh, and I don't want to put my trash cans in the backyard because I don't want to haul them that far to get up to the curb. Um, uh. And if I built a screening structure, hide my cans, uh, it would make it a tight squeeze to get my car around the driveway. Uh, and and so. I'm. I don't see that big of an issue with the Lemay's type of receptacles, uh, every house in this, in this peninsula has them. Uh, um, and I just don't have a problem with them.
But given that the city. Was the one who required all residents to sign up with Lemay and Lemay came up with these giant. Rolling. Receptacles. Um, it's sort of offensive to me that we're gonna ask people now to figure out how to make them aesthetically pleasing. I, I mean, I, I want people to take care of their garbage, but you know, the the dumpsters that everybody have are so large. That, um, if if you put them in your garage, it takes up a whole, you know, you can't put a car in there. And, um, you know. I I think trying to to legislate that now they have to screen them is sort of a double. Double insult.
Okay, so are you all comfortable with just leaving that alone? We're not gonna talk about that.
I, I agree with Frank. And in my neighborhood, most people put them on the side of the house. It was not really very physical.
Okay, very good. Um, all right, so moving on to item C, this is what we had talked about before with screening mechanical equipment. Um, or, and and I think we should. Define this a little bit better, but three C says except for public utilities, mechanical equipment shall not be located in front yards.
Well, that would, that would be heat pumps, that would be mini split units, that would be propane tanks. Meter bases is, I think is Rich's issue. Um, so is that? Is that about some of what this is talking about, you think?
I, I agree with you that I think that that sums up and and your electrical meter may be on the front of the house. But but all of the other stuff, heat pumps and and furnaces and and propane tanks, uh, should not be at the front of the house. So I think that leaving that alone is all right.
Um, if we get into the next item, item D, it goes into a little more detail. Um, so all mechanical equipment, including roof mounted, must be screened so as not to be visible from the street. Shared access easement and common green spaces, so typically not from any public, um, viewing corridor. Screening can be accomplished by fencing, architectural screening, or evergreen landscape material. Equipment to be screened includes, but is not limited to, heating and air conditioning units, venting. Associated with commercial grade cooking facilities and any mechanical equipment associated with pools or hot tubs. So then we could add the heat pumps and, um, I don't know, whatever, the electrical meters.
I'm okay with everything in there except including roof mounted. Uh, um. Trying to screen your roof mounted air conditioner or heat pump, uh, I'm thinking, for example, the senior center, uh, that that big fan they've got on the roof. Um, uh, so I'd like to strike including roof mounted out of that sentence.
Uh, so we are only talking about residential, um, construction here for Ocean Shores anyway, right? We're not applying this to any kind of a commercial building.
That wouldn't apply to the senior center.
I just use the senior center as an example, I don't know if there are residences that have roof mounted, uh, uh, heat pump. Units up there, that seems to be to be a little bit awkward to to service them, uh, but I still don't like. Including roof mounted in that sentence.
I agree, I think that should get strike.
Okay, so we're gonna take out roof mounted. And then I think, would we want to add something?
So so let me just throw this at you guys. So the first one, we got except for public utilities, mechanical equipment should not be located in the front yard. What if we said mechanical equipment, all mechanical equipment must be screened? Period, and then take out that except, uh, and take out shall not be located in front yards. We don't care if it's located in the front yard as long as it's screened, we just don't want to see it, right?
Right.
I I've got a guy across the way. He put his propane and lights on. And has not screened. Yeah, that's the kind of thing that we, you know, sometimes that's the only place you can put it. And if that's the case, because if you put a larger than a hundred gallon propane tank in, it's gotta be ten feet away from the building. So if you're on a five-foot setback, you know, you may be that that's where you have to put it, but I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for it to be screened.
I don't either.
Okay, so the the sentence would read, mechanical equipment located in front yards must be screened.
But if if D says that, says all mechanical equipment must be screened, is not be visible from the screen.
Okay, okay, gotcha, so take out C completely?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So we'll go ahead and. Alright, so we'll go ahead and take out that sentence and we'll strike it out.
And I don't think we need to put venting associated with commercial grade cooking facilities. I, I don't think that applies to what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And what about, okay, so.
I don't know how many pools there are, but. I don't, typically, mechanical equipment for a hot tub is incorporated in the hot tub, so. I don't know that either of, any of that applies.
Uh, what about?
What's that, Dan?
Unless you have a gas or propane. One of my houses, I have. Natural gas.
So we want to include propane tanks. Heating and air conditioning, any mechanical equipment associated with holder hot tubs, propane tanks. Or any other.
I think propane tank will just about do it.
Okay.
Everything else is already, already said in there.
Okay, alright. Alright, and then we can ignore ENF.
Yep.
Okay, so for item three, the only. One we want to keep is D, and we're going to change the language a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, street trees. We probably don't want to get into this, right?
We don't have street trees.
We already did that. Okay, so lighting. Alright, so starting at C1. Rich, are you back? Are you back, Rich?
Hey, just showed up.
Okay. We lost it.
Dan, you can hear me now?
Kind of.
I was going to say, we needed to have public utilities in that previous one. You know, where you had mechanical equipment, so that, so that public utilities can also be screened.
Ah. Okay, so all mechanical equipment.
Including public utilities.
Alright.
Or however.
Well, the only public utilities are the electrical meters.
Cable. Telephone.
Those sewer vent pipes that are always located in awkward places.
There you go, there's three extra things.
So, but that says. Says public utilities.
No.
Hello?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, as, as I bicycle around my neighborhood, I see some of the candy canes that are in, you know, kind of right smack in, in, in the, in the front. Uh, street corner of the lot. And, and so what is that person supposed to do? Build a little fence around that candy cane?
Plant something.
Yeah, plant some bushes.
Yeah, shrub in front of it.
Or get a fake rock that sits over the top of it, I don't know.
Well, the, the, you can't put a rock over the top of the candy canes, they're two and three feet high, four inches in diameter. I'm talking about the sewer vents, the, the vacuum, the vacuum.
Yeah, candy canes is a good term. Alright.
Planting.
So do we need to specify sewer vent pipes?
I would prefer to leave sewer vent pipes alone. They are an integral part of the utilities in this entire peninsula. Every single house has them, I think there's like six houses that are still on, on septic. And, and. I'm just not offended by the candy canes.
Richard, one of the things that could be done is people can cut them down to a reasonable height.
Really?
Secondly, another thing that can be done to make them kind of blend is to paint them the same color as the house. So that they're just not green and white.
You just don't want to block them. If you put them too close to the ground, they. Could get blocked by vegetation and that really does cause a problem with the way your toilets work.
Reasonable height, I mean, I've seen people that leave them four feet high.
Yeah, well.
Well, they get two lots over, they just put in RV. Utilities and the candy cane is very high and it's right on the road. I, I was kind of surprised with that.
So those candy canes are. Um, they're not put in by the public utilities, they're put in by the property owner, correct?
No, they're put in by the, I don't know the answer to that, I, let me shut up, I started to say something, I don't know.
Technically, technically, they are the property owners because they're outside of, you know, the connection. The city's responsibility starts at the sewer line, your connection to the sewer line is your problem. But that vent has to be in there for your toilets to work properly and. And, you know, if you're, if it's a custom built home, you can dictate where that vent is going to go.
But that vent can also be dug around and put into a less obtrusive spot.
Sure, absolutely, that's why I say, if it's a custom built home, the owner. Usually prescribes where that thing is going to go.
So should we?
In a spec home, I, you know, it's wherever is most convenient and it's usually done in a spec home within two or three feet of the foundation.
Should we be prescribing where those things go then? I mean, should we just say they need to go in a side yard or a backyard, or should we leave it at they need to be screened?
They've got to be between the house and, and, and the, and the sewer connection out at the curb.
Right.
They, they do, but, but the way, the way they work is they're just like a vent for your sewer. For your, to go up through the roof. It doesn't have to be directly off of the top, it can go out back and around, as long as it's got a free flow. It doesn't have to be, so it doesn't have to be in line with your sewer pipe, it has to connect into that sewer pipe and it can be routed out around.
Mine's 20 feet from the house, but it's in the middle of a. Crab apple plantation and you don't really see it, but. So it, it, the homeowner can dictate where, where it goes, but like I said, if it's a spec house, they usually put it within three feet of the foundation.
So back to the question, are we, are we going to ask people just to screen them with planting or something? Or are we going to actually prescribe where they need to be located? What do you guys want to do?
The screening is recommended, yeah.
Screening is right, that's true.
Okay, alright, so can we, okay, so then we're moving out of here, we're moving forward. We've got street trees, which we're not talking about, and we're back to the lighting, so item C, lighting. Uh, do we want to get into this? Lighting, number one, all front entryways shall have an exterior light.
I would propose that we start fresh with that area next time.
We have, um, we're on page 10 of 11, so we're almost done and we have 20 minutes left in the meeting.
Well, I was just thinking, looking at what Richard is dealing with, this could be a lengthy discussion.
I, I think that lighting, just as it is written, works just fine and paragraph three says everything that it needs to say.
I like that too, yeah.
Anything to that, then, then the national standard for light trespass is, is .3 foot candles at your boundary line. And as you can see by my background photo, I don't think that guy complies.
Nope, that's pretty bad.
It's so, so, like I said, if I were to add anything, but that goes back to when we were discussing the. Night sky lighting, the, the, the dark skies. And we went around and around about, about the .3 foot candles, but that is the national standard. And I intended last night, but I went to bed too early to take my light meter, actually to take past light meter and measure how many foot candles is at my fence line. And I, I'm pretty sure it's a lot more than .3. And, and the property owner deflected and said, well, what about that street light over on the corner? And that street light is, I, I measured it way back when we were doing the size, but I don't remember what it is now. But the cone of that light doesn't cross into my yard, it certainly crosses into the yard and that. Where, where that light, at the house where that light is at. But that was a deflection. He also wants me to chop down my tree because he's a. Garage.
Eleanor might have been right, maybe we should pick this up next meeting.
You know. It's just, it's written just fine and, and it cuts through all of the deflection and, and, and all of the rationalization. And if we wanted to add anything to that, then, then put in the .3 foot candles, light trespass at your property boundary. And, and I'm, I'm okay with the way this is written, says just fine.
Are we all okay with this, the way it's written?
Good.
Okay, are we okay with item two about multifamily housing projects? That doesn't really apply because we were, but. Um, just leave it like it is?
I, I think that that's good because that precludes. The, the person in the, in, in a triplex unit from going away for six months and leaving their light shining in my eyes. If it's on a timer, then it doesn't. And, and actually, I would like, I'd like to say, instead of timers, I'd like to see motion detectors. If my neighbor put a motion detector on that light, I would not be so unhappy because. I wouldn't have it shining in my bedroom all night long.
For a windy night.
So, given that we have a lot of vacation homes where people are not, whether it's multifamily or single family. Should we just be saying that all. All unoccupied homes must put their exterior lighting on a timer or a sensor? Right, because you don't want your neighbor who's never there to leave their porch lights on that are blinding you, I mean, they're not even there, so why do they need, right? You follow what I'm saying, guys?
Well, if it's on, if it's on a sensor, the light comes on at night. If it's, if it's on a timer, it comes on at night, if it's on a motion sensor, it only comes on when there's an intruder, whether it's a people or an animal. But the motion sensor, sensor makes a lot more sense than leaving. Bright lights on all night. I'm thinking about Marley Penery and, and, and her repeated comments. About her neighbors and the lights that are there all night long. And if the light doesn't cross your property, if the light trespass, if the light cone doesn't cross your boundary, then it's not offensive.
Oh, so why do you care if the light's on or not?
Right, we're talking about number two, are we going to leave that in there about multifamily, do we want to change that?
Actually, I think it's in there to be a, a safety issue because, and given that we've got number three there, I think we've got that, the whole. The whole thing covered. Even if, if, even with the multifamily standard, number three is still relevant, meaning that. Even in a multifamily, it should not extend beyond the lot boundary.
But Greg, you're absolutely right.
Can we just wrap this up? Because.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think. I think it's fine now, yeah.
I do too.
Okay.
Alright, item D, addressing. Basically, everybody needs to have an address. I don't think we can, so it says, to facilitate first responders in the event of an emergency, address numerals on all residential structures must be located near exterior lighting. And in an area which is plainly visible when approached from the primary access point. I don't think we can require exterior lighting, given that we don't really have streetlights in most of ocean shores. But I think requiring addresses is fine.
It's already code required.
It is, yeah, so can we just ignore this one then?
Yes.
Okay, good, moving on to E, front and side yard uses. Um, I, it's been a while since I looked at this, so I don't quite remember. So let's just read it, uh, front yards shall be for ornamental purposes only, I don't think that applies. No storage sheds, portable sheds, temporary canopies or other similar structures may be located within the front yard. Except during sales, I.
I like A.
I like A too, I was just thinking, storage sheds are, are different than portable.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
That's a shed.
Just take, take, strike out the storage sheds, you just put no portable storage tents.
Why?
Why get rid of that, Pat?
Because we have a, a lot of nice looking sheds in front yards. In town.
And some not so nice, well, then.
Okay.
Well, I'm okay with leaving it in.
Um, so I live on the lake, so my front yard is kind of like my backyard and the only place I would want to put a shed is in my front yard.
Exactly, so there's that.
Yeah. So we're saying, so, so that's why I would recommend taking that out, but.
Well, maybe it should just be. Some, something to hide it from the street, because we have a shed and, and what's our front yard on the street side, but you can't see it from the street.
Well, we've, we've got a lot of people that are street side.
A lot, yeah, yeah. Not all, they're not undesirable necessarily, so.
Well, good thing you guys are grandfathered in.
It could be screened in the future would be good.
Right, I don't know. About five minutes and we got to wrap it up.
Okay, so do you guys want to revisit this next meeting, or do you want to try to finish it today?
Well, we've only got three more, three more paragraphs, and if we strike no portable, no, no storage sheds and just start with portable storage tents, that sentence is great.
Okay, I think I'm good with that, are we all agreed, in agreement with that? Yeah, okay, so then moving on, item B, parking of vehicles or. Utility trailers on lawn or landscape areas of a front yard or side yard adjacent to a public roadway is not permitted. Take it out?
Yep.
Are we all good with that?
Do you want.
Why?
Parking vehicles on lawns, okay?
A lot of people are doing it.
And, and, and a lot of the houses, especially some of the new construction, the grass eventually grows up. And the only place to park can be. On that, on that front lawn or on that front, on that front area. And ultimately, they may want to gravel that in, you want, and make it more of a parking spot.
Right.
But I can think of, as I drive around the town, I see houses, I see cars parked in front of houses, not in the driveway, I see it all over the city. I don't have a problem with that, I have a problem with that, when the vehicle is parked out in the street so that it blocks traffic.
Yeah, but if somebody's got a nice, if somebody's got a regular lawn, you think it's okay to go ahead and park on that?
It's his yard, it's his lawn, if he wants to park on his nice lawn, it's his lawn. I don't have a problem with that.
I just think, given the number of properties that are like basically gravel driveways across the entire front yard, we can't really get into this.
Well, that's called a driveway.
Well, but the whole front yard is the driveway.
Okay, but it's a driveway.
Right, I, yeah, if people want to ruin their landscaping by parking a car on it, I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I just, I, I don't care about this.
I, I would strike it, and I would strike number two also, uh, um. I don't think it applies.
Well, are we, let's stick with B, are we all good with B, with not, with just ignoring B?
Take it out.
Everybody, everybody agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, okay.
I agree.
So, and then Rich says number two doesn't apply, um.
Take that out.
Yeah, I just don't think it's important, I don't think we're, yeah, okay, number three, front yard setbacks may not be used for the storage of boats, campers, or any RV, um, I just don't.
Look at that one.
Yeah, exactly, so I think we ignore that as well, are you guys in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and then number four. Um, a minimum of fifty square feet of landscape area must be located between the facade of the structure and the nearest public rightway unless otherwise approved. By the design review board, this applies to both side and front yards. I like that, I don't know if I like it exactly how it is.
Ten by five? Boy, that's huge.
I, well, it's, is it?
Ten by five, that's, that's. It's nothing.
Oh yeah, okay, so you're being sarcastic, yeah.
Very, that's.
You better just say, when is he not?
Say what?
When is he not? Okay, so, so I think that's a nice requirement, I don't know if we agree with the, the language exactly as it is, but, um. What do you guys think?
We're leaving four in.
I think fifty, I think fifty square feet is a joke.
Okay, so what should we say then?
Pat? How many square feet are you developing?
We develop everything that's not concrete. So, but that's, you know, I don't know, that, that's a tough one that we're trying to do there.
What that's saying, the way I read what this is saying, is that if I have a, a, uh, uh, if I gravel in my front yard. I have to have fifty square feet of, of plants in there, and I don't like weeding.
But it doesn't really say that.
Well, didn't, didn't we already cover this when we did vegetation? And we. We struggled with whether rock was okay, we struggled with, you know, we talked about the. Um, Zurich type of an approach where there was no plants, I, I'm uncomfortable with re-. I think aesthetically, it sounds good. But, um, I don't want to have fifty square feet that I got a manicure, I personally prefer native vegetation.
Greg, that's exactly what I, what I agree with you, one hundred percent, you said it more eloquently than I did.
That native vegetation could be part of your fifty square feet, though, it doesn't.
Right.
I, I may have to put, I may have to put a storage shed on it if I don't get some relief from the city.
Well, put, you better put four up right now.
Okay, what do we, what do we think about? We're running out of time.
Yeah.
I have a question for Tanya, is, Tanya, are, are you going to compile this and turn it into some form of a document, uh, in? That we can look at and say, this is the document, rather than all of this scratch in and scratch out?
Not yet, um, and we need to look at our current code and figure out how this lines up with the current code, and we need to. Uh, make sure that we are not leaving out something that this did not include, um, so I don't think we're quite ready to make a final document. And then the other thing I would recommend is that when we do make our final document and we start making recommendations to our current code. We deliver the city council an item by item. Document that demonstrates what the current code says and what we're proposing to change, so it's two columns so that they can easily see what we're trying to change. Um.
I think that's great.
But so yes, Rich, we need to do that, but I'm not planning on doing that yet.
Okay, uh, and, and. Okay, that's all, that's my only question.
Okay.
So.
I think we need to come back to item four next meeting.
I think we should, it's, it's, it's included in landscape ordinance already.
We don't have a specific square foot requirement.
I would say a certain amount of yard, if I, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm willing to take this out of your, if you guys are comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Okay, so no color means we're ignoring it, I'm gonna delete my comment, okay. Back to you, Dan.
What, what, what's, what's your next step, what's our next step?
Next step is, um. People.
Your two column, uh, presentation is probably the next step.
Right, so that would be taking the existing code and then inserting this language where it is appropriate into the current code, but before we do that, um, I wanted to make sure that we didn't. Skip over something that might not have been in here, like, are there other things we need to address that we haven't covered here?
So, so my, my suggestion is when we compare this to the existing code, that, uh, uh. Things that we failed to address are things that are inadequately addressed in changes we've accepted of Linden, uh, those will all come to light as we're looking at the existing code side by side. Uh, or, or, so it'd be fairly easy to, to copy the existing code and turn it into a Word document, uh, and then put in. These changes where they fit the existing code, uh, so that we have something, some kind of structure to work from.
Okay, um, are, are, Richard, are you and Dan even gonna work on that together, or? How do we want to go? We're, we're about out of time.
Do we need to do any final public comments for this meeting?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, um, alright, so. If people, if, if all of you commissioners don't have anything else that you want to talk about or insert. And, and we're comfortable just moving forward with this language getting put into the current code. Then I will take the current code and I will compare it to what we've done here. And I will put that document together for the next meeting.
It sounds like a plan. Okay, our next meeting, uh, is Tuesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Our next note taking is Eleanor, you knew that.
Yep.
Okay. My motion adjourned.
Move.
Who did the first?
I'll second it.
Who was first?
Eleanor.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thanks guys.
Who was first?
Eleanor.
Okay.
See you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, Tanya.
Thanks, good job you.
Good job, Katie.